Move on to our first agenda item and I would ask that you would rise and join me for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item up is our consent agenda. These are routine items which typically require very little discussion or debate. Any questions or comments from the board regarding the consent agenda?
None.
Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through G as presented? Motion by Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have the Hark Honey Run, an event scheduled on August 26, 2023.
This is the typical annual event that they've been holding for quite a few years. I'm not quite sure how long, but nothing unusual. Diane has reviewed it and it's ready for consideration.
It's a good event. Any comments or questions from the board in reference to this event? Any comments or questions from the audience reference to this event? Any on Zoom?
No.
Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve, to approve the Hemfield Rec Center's application to hold the 2023 Annual Amos Herr 5K Honey Run on August 26, 2023, and authorize the chairman to sign the indemnification agreement regarding roadway impacts for the event?
So.
Okay. Motion for Mr. LaFever. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. The opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have Kellogg's, a support letter for the Department of Energy for grant submission to decarbonize and reduce emissions at their East Hemfield Township plant.
So their plant at State Road and Yellow Goose Road, they reached out to us. They have asked us for a support letter for the grant that they are submitting to the Department of Energy.
Yeah. Pretty self-explanatory. Any questions or comments in regards to this? Hearing none from the board. Any questions or comments from the audience? Any from Zoom?
No.
Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to authorize the chairman to sign the letter of support for the Kellogg's Department of Energy grant submission? Motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. LaFever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. So up next, we have, under old business, we have the Church Knoll Master Park Plan Draft for review. And before I turn this over to Mrs. Schweitzer here, just a couple of comments I wanted to share before we get started here. You know, we've had quite a bit of conversation and discussion about this this year. And I do want to highlight some of the things that we do as a board agree on. And I think first and foremost, we are united and committed to preserving this as open space as a park. Second, we have all committed that currently we do not have funds to build out this park, no matter what we decide on. And third, what we're talking about right now is a concept plan. This is not a final plan and it will change over time. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Schweitzer and if you can give us a little history and go through what we have in front of us.
Okay, so we started with a concept plan, which we know as Plan B, which you see on your screens now. It is currently this plan. This is the one that was presented to the Board of Supervisors and also went through the charrette process and the survey process. We started the project with a request from HYA for ball fields. So that was our precipitous to get some sort of action on the 50 acres. And we decided that with 50 acres, it needs a master plan. We need to know what we're going to put in that 50 acres before we even attempt to start anything with dirt. The master plan is very mobile. It changes. It facilitates the grant applications that will be necessary, whether it's township or whether it's HYA or another group to get funding for anything regarding this 50 acres. The group, the powers that be, want to see what the potential is for the project. And this could be anywhere from one to 10 to 15 phases of this and probably will not look whatever plan is decided on. So concept plan had four ball fields with lighting, two-story center structure, which was the press box, restrooms, concession area, and the storage facility. It had a dog park and it had a hard surface area, which was listed out as pickleball and tennis, but could also be basketball. Restroom and a storage facility, the playground with a pavilion, expanded trail system, and then the flexible field area with 215 parking spaces and Knoll Road buffer planting. We heard concerns from residents regarding stormwater, safety, traffic, noise, lights, and our passive recreation facility. Keep in mind that the standards of all the plans would include stormwater facilities. They would include benches and they would include native plantings. So then we moved to Concept C, which was developed by staff, DMA, and reviewed by the planning group, which took into factor the after use, the user groups and the resident feedback. This concept still shows four baseball fields. We did remove the lighting, the press box, the restroom, the concession stand, which was in the center of that wheel. It's now replaced with a flagpole. It still has a dog park. It still has the hard surface area. Restroom and storage facilities have been moved and our attempt at this was to hear the residents of Randy Road and Knoll to try to push all the active recreation into the center of the, of the project, which is why some of these things were moved around. We also added trails interior to the site. The lower left-hand, right-hand corner now has a meadow area showing with some trails through it. We also created a picnic row with trails, which is to the top next to Knoll. There's a picnic pavilion, which was not in the original print, and also a fitness cluster. We still have the open field area, but at this point it is not designated as anything. And we still have the 215 parking spaces with the Knoll Road buffering. In addition to that, we also show at the very top along Knoll Road, a raised pedestrian crosswalk at Ladderback and Signal Hill. The planning group was not in full agreement in terms of what they wanted to see and Mr. LaFever had put together his results based on resident feedback. In his version of, of Concept D, it shows one ball field. It has the hard surface area, as you can see in the gray. It has a restroom facility, a storage building next to the ball field, the playground with the pavilion. It also has expanded interior trail system. And that has naturalized meadow areas along it. It also has the picnic row with, with natural areas. And two picnic, two pavilions are listed on there, as well as the fitness cluster and two sports fields in the center, which are just outlined in, in black. 174 parking spaces and this one has two access points on Knoll Road. It also has the raised pedestrian crosswalks at Ladderback and Signal Hill and has two access points. So this is at the point we're at now. We started with Plan B, a couple of renditions we had before that. We have Plan C and we have Plan D to discuss tonight.
So what we're going to do first, we're going to discuss it amongst ourselves tonight and then we'll turn it over for questions after we're finished with our discussion here. Questions and comments to the audience. So we're going to go from left to right. So Mr. LaFever, I'm going to let you go first.
Okay, a couple more significant points between the two plans. The Plan D does not show the berm along Knoll Road, which was designed or conceived possibly to reduce the impact of the activities on the park to the local residences. As, nothing will happen here until some funding occurs and when funding does occur, we would expect there'll be limitations. We'll have to decide what to do. The berm, creating a berm like that, requiring off-site borrow- fill probably is an extreme expense. And so this plan does not show that. This plan restricts vehicular traffic to the parking area along the north side, along Knoll Road with two accesses, one at Ladderback Road and one at Signal Hill. This plan shows in accordance with the feedback from the 124 survey responders that were East Hemfield Township residents, that it's a broader scope of, of the active activities. Provides for more of the field soccer, rugby, hockey, different things in this plan. And it's good instead of the four baseball fields. If you can discern a line, an invisible line, from Ladderback at the west end of the parking area down to the southeast corner, that separates, for the most part, the active and the passive uses. And so noise generated from those things, family picnicking, pavilion use, the playground, those events would be less offensive to the adjacent neighbors along Knoll Road, Hermosa and Randy. I believe those are the significant points of interest for Plan D.
Yeah. I have taken a look at both of the plans and for myself, I would say I did like the initial plan that was shown that we had talked about. I thought there was a lot of positives. And Ms. Schweitzer went over and we called it Plan B here earlier tonight. That being said, taking into consideration a lot of the neighbors' concerns and desire for, I guess, a less impactive to their neighborhood, there's some of the changes I think that I can support in, in Concept C. So when we look at the plans, I would say the first thing that I would, I would just point out that I like about Concept C is I believe the entrance and the traffic flow into the park, I like better. I like the one entrance. I also like the additional parking and I like the fact that the parking goes deep into the park. Under Plan D, if we can go back to Plan D, all the parking is up along Knoll Road. We will have some elderly people that will want to access this, some handicap people and getting to where all of the amenities are going to be in the park. I just believe it's a better flow and a better design under Concept C for that. I like the fact that you can get to the future amenities easier. I think the restroom is more centrally located as well under Plan C. I like the berm. After listening to the neighbors talk, one of their main concerns was noise and concern about lights. I think the berm definitely addresses that and I would even go further. I don't want to change or send this back for any more revisions, but if the board would be willing to entertain a note on the plan, I would like to see that berm or some additional screening continue along the east side. Because I think the neighbors that get impacted the most from this will be the neighbors on Hermosa and be the neighbors on Randy Drive. So I would like to see additional screening on the east if the board is so inclined to, to make that a note. But I do not want to send this back to the drawing board. When we convene again next month, I'd like us to move forward as again, this is a concept plan. One other thing I like about this plan is it doesn't commit and it leaves open to the imagination. As we've all talked about and Mrs. Schweitzer talked on the, touched on this, it could be one, 10, 15, you know, 20 reiterations of this plan as it gets developed over the years, but the northeast corner is left completely open and no doubt will be decided by future boards and not this board in particular. And just like we could not envision 15 years ago, the pickleball would grow in popularity to what it's grown today. We are not going to be able to foresee what the needs are 15, 20 years from now for a future board. So I do like that about this plan. I do think it does take into consideration a lot of what the neighbors had to say. There's definitely been active recreation that's been taken away and there's been more passive that has been added. So I do think it's a healthy compromise. And again, the only addition that I would, would like to see would be additional screening on the east side. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Bennett.
Okay. I don't want to repeat a lot of what Scott has said, but I do have some other comments that, that I think I agree with most of, if not 100% of what he says. The comments that I have to do or have, want to make has to do with frankly, staff responding to, to what the community wants. On our first master plan, the athletic fields were much, much closer to the residences. They were, you know, in the, in the C concept, everything is moved to the, to the rear of the property, west and south. Hopefully reducing the, any, any noise that comes out of them. Again, if you look at what happens out here and the activity that we have out here, just about every, every night, at the end of the day, you really don't hear much noise. And I don't think we would have much noise with the, with the, with the C concept plan. Based on the survey results, the community was looking for walking trails. We have 2.2 and 2 and 1/2 miles of walking trails on C. The community was interested in trees, benches, playground, covered picnic area, open lawn. We have, we have a meadow depicted to the, I'm going to say, to the right of the picture in, in the corner. It was a significant portion of the property devoted to a meadow area, path lighting. We, we heard your concerns about lights, concession stands, noise, those, those kind of things, and they've been eliminated from the plan. We think that the, the sports fields, the areas that are left untouched here can be used in a lot of different ways. They could be used for additional sports activity or they could be used for more, more passive activity. Comment here on passive activity. You have a board here that's, that's, that is in favor of passive activity generally. When you go down to Knoll Doorwork Park, I, I, I suggest that there is an example of what can be done from a passive park standpoint. It's, it's a great spot. It's a great walking spot and we've done, we've done a great job there, I believe. Fitness, fitness trail, ball fields. You know, rather than, in my, in my, in this draft, rather than designating hardcore activity, we'll let the community decide that. The community can come in and say if they want pickleball or if they want basketball or if they want tennis. I think we've got a good traffic design. We've got a good parking design. We can, again, we'll, we're going to be making all kinds of adjustments to, to, to the plan as time goes on and as we develop the park. But we can perhaps tighten up the parking a little bit, move it, move it further towards the ballpark and away from the neighbors. Finally, you know, I really, has everyone seen the depiction of the, of Knoll Road with the improvements that we're suggesting? Maybe we could put that up on the.
Not testing me. You're testing me.
I, I think, I think it would be a real improvement for the, for the neighbors on Knoll Road. Again, it would, it'll mitigate much of the noise and I agree with Mr., Mr. Wiggles' suggestion about extending that as far as I can. To Mr. LaFever's point, it is, it is going to be expensive. It will cost some money. But again, we're not going to raise taxes to build a park. We're not going to raise taxes to, to put this berm, berm in. But I think at the end of the day, it's going to be a real plus for the park.
Can you speak into your mic? They can't.
Okay. That's all I've got. Thank you.
All right. Guess my turn. So for the berm, I'm looking at the contours of the, which I think is the existing stormwater basin and it looks that on all the plans, it's expanded quite a lot and that's going to create a lot of extra soil, I think, could be used for the berm. And even to sink, however many ball fields we end up with, that wouldn't think hurt to sink them down a little bit, which would generate more excess. So I don't see, I don't think that the berm would be a difficult problem to get enough soil to build that. So I would like to see something like that. If, I think the, the cut could be adjusted to, to make that happen. I think with our history with racket sports near residences, I don't think I like the D option, which has the racket sports pretty much in the middle of the park. I think to keep them as far away from the residents as possible, which would put that, I like that down at the south end as much as possible. And I did not think of Mr. Wiggles' words. I didn't catch that about the parking, but I do remember my parents coming to see my son play baseball and having difficulty being able to walk. And so being able to park, even have, we should really have handicap spaces there. And so they should be maybe scattered throughout the park as much as possible, but I do like the idea of having the parking down into the park. You know, to improve access. Or I do see on option C, what I'm not quite in favor of there is, it seems very baseball centric. There's four fields and I don't really see any, any carve out for field sports. Like soccer would be the main one. C does, is a little, I'm not sure I'm in favor of only one baseball field. I think I'd like to see maybe two. And maybe still be able to fit a soccer field or two in there also, just to balance things out some. So I'm kind of in between C and D. I think I see good things in both of them. But nothing that, I mean, I'm, I'm probably okay with either of them, but I'd actually like to see something kind of like a mashup of the two of them.
So, thank you, Mr. Weaver. And I, now that you mentioned it with the stormwater and stuff, I do believe the cut and fill and if the fields are sunken, definitely would create enough, enough earth for those berms. So appreciate you pointing that out. Let me just add, add this. So this whole thing got started or, you know, got moved forward last year from, you know, HYA's request for ball fields, space for ball fields. They have a need for ball fields. It's more than one field. And, you know, this is what they've told us they need. I, I do think we have the space for it and can accommodate them. We can still accommodate other things in the future as a possibility. So that's where I'm at with that.
And, and that's what I was going to say. They, they came to us.
You have to speak into your.
They, they came to us with, with their need. I think it would be wrong of the board to approve a master plan with one field on it and then winding up at four. I think there's a better possibility that depicting four, we may wind up with three. I, I, but at the end of the day, I think, I think four is the right, the four would be the right number and certainly the right number to depict in a master, master plan. Okay.
I don't want to repeat anything, except I would say the plans speak for themselves. Plan D records the results of the 124 residents in the survey, showing both the active and passive in basically equal layouts. And in the active, it shows more diversity in the active sports than a primary concentration on baseball. So with that, I'll, I'll rest my comments.
Okay. Anything else from anybody else on the board? Okay. All right. We're going to open this up for public comment. We're going to start on the left side of the room and work our way back. So there's no one in the first row. Anyone in the second row that wants to speak? Comments, questions? Anyone in the third row that wants to speak? Anyone in the last row that wants to speak? Yes, sir. If you could please come up and state your name. Sure. Yep. We just need that for the meeting minute purposes.
3A760.
And your name, sir?
Sorry?
Your name.
Oh, Rene Munoz. I just want a clarification on what this view was. Is this Knoll Road that you're showing or church?
This is Knoll. This is what it looks like now.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And that's objective.
Anyone else in that back row? Okay. We'll go here on the right side, front row. Okay.
Patty Clark, 3337 Cochran Drive. Just to briefly, just thank everybody, not only the staff for the township, but also the supervisors for the efforts put forth for public comment and input. To me, that's, that was the most important part of this whole process. I know it's been a long process and kind of difficult at times, but my, you know, my primary interest in it was really just to hear from the residents and what, what people wanted. And I do think the, the two new plans, the two newer plans are much closer to what was recorded in the survey results and the, probably the open house, but just to say thanks for all of the efforts and redesigns.
Thank you. Anyone else in that row? Anyone in the last row? Yes, sir, if you could come forward.
Bob Johnson, 1321 Stevens Street, Mannheim, East Hemfield. As Mrs. Clark just said, I want to express some appreciation. You guys have, I've been following on Zoom and I've attended a few meetings and really appreciate all the input that you've taken. It looks like, as Mrs. Clark said, there's been adjustments to the plans. I wanted to mention when Mr. Weaver was, was talking about baseball fields, I can't. I can't speak for H Y A now. I can for twenty years ago because I was kind of involved with getting fields. Um, I thought the two fields was a great idea because. The uh, the baseball fields generally come in like sixty-foot bases, seventy-five-foot bases, ninety-foot bases. It looks like um. Perhaps, but I can't tell from where I was sitting that there is like a ninety-foot baseball field. On there that would typically be for high school. So I, I don't know if it, did. Did H Y A request um a large full-size baseball field? Yeah, they did. Okay.
Fields is, is full size for their U fifteen and U seventeen players.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay, because when I was thinking of the two fields, I was thinking of forty-five and a sixty. And then um if they do have a requirement for, I mean, the sixty and the seventy-five, they have a requirement for the ninety-foot bases, then they do. And then also just, just a question, what, isn't there some um guideline where. You don't have a field where the batter face west? I'm, I know I'm getting into a detail now, maybe too much, but um, just, just a thought that. You know, generally there aren't fields where batters face into the sun because generally you're playing in the evening. Again, maybe it's, maybe just a triviality and not appropriate for this, but I'm just throwing it out there because. I'm, I'm interested in that kind of thing.
It might be a good question for our township manager, I mean, our sports ex- expert.
I, I know that H Y A looked at this wagon wheel design. I think they chose the location of the larger field, the ninety-foot field because of that. I don't think they felt that the, the smaller fields, it mattered as much. But I think they did take that into account.
And again, this is just at the very, very preliminary stages, it's sketch concept. And I think when they get into the more deeper dive as far as the design goes, when they start figuring out little things like you're talking about. And get into that minutia, you know, they're probably going to have to make quite a few adjustments from what you see here.
And then the, on the chart, the yellow and the blue, um, what is that area?
The area in the blue?
Yeah.
Not sure.
Right in the middle or.
Think he's talking about the playground.
This is the playground with a pavilion in the middle. The, the two, the pavilion would demarcate uh like two to five and then five to twelve age group.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in that back row that wished to speak? Do we have anyone on Zoom that wanted to comment or have any questions?
No.
Okay. So, Mrs. White, so these, both of these plans will be put on the website this week?
Correct, they'll be up tomorrow morning.
Okay, so um, folks, if you're online and uh you'll be able to take a, a deeper look at them as well. As uh those of you that are here, um, they will be posted online uh for you to take a look at. And then at our next meeting, I believe that's, our schedule was, that's when we would adopt a concept plan.
That's correct.
So at our next meeting, um, most likely one of these plans will be adopted. It'll be on the agenda for adoption. So we'll be able, uh, if you have any other further questions or concerns, be able to discuss it at that meeting as well.
One request?
Sure.
We took num- uh, option C. Now that. I know that H Y A wants a, a big kids' field, but. If we left the three smaller ones to the south and replaced the large one to the north with possibly two soccer fields, I think. That would probably be my preference. I mean, it could be switched back, it could become a baseball field at some point or. It have some flexibility, but.
Mr. Weaver, here you call, the first concept plan, those, that large green area. Was use, use sports, field sports of some sort. We actually simply removed that. And so Plan C, it's, the space is still there, it's just not designated.
Well, that's tries, that's to be like passive recreation, but I guess they could in the possibly at some point become. Like soccer fields too, so that would. That would be a possibility. I mean, like you keep saying, it's concept, it's not written in stone. But if you take that out of passive, then that, that was a large interest in passive recreation, so. And that would um.
Sure, and I would just add to, Mr. Weaver, just food for thought on, on that subject. To my knowledge, I do not, I know we were twenty-some years ago contacted about soccer fields. But I don't believe in the recent past, have we, has the park and recs received requests for soccer fields?
Possible lacrosse.
Okay.
You seem to be, a lot of them scattered around for like the hemp, the classic, Hempfield Classic, they seem to have enough fields. You know, they're spread out, so maybe that's not even an issue then.
I, I don't think it is right now. I spent a little time around soccer fields from time to time and, and uh. Right now, there, there, I, I think there are plenty of soccer fields. So I don't, I think the, the need will be more towards, as Mrs. White said, lacrosse. Uh, field hockey, maybe, you know, something along, something along that line. Uh, with maybe, with maybe some of the other open space, but, but again, everything up here. Subject to change.
Don't want to lock ourselves into something now that, like if we build one ball field.
Niners.
Then um, we're locked into that. Know what I mean? We, we just put one ball field on there and we don't think through a future. Better use than we have that ball field. Sort of stuck there and may not be in the ideal place.
No, and I, and I agree with that, and I think when we, when, when they come back with whatever their plan is going to be, that that needs to be taken into account. I think you're spot on. I agree that we, we should not be starting out with the field in the middle. So yeah, I think we're all on the same page with that. So I, I think step one is, you know, we can do this and they've got a lot of homework. A lot of work to do on their part before they can come back to us, so. Okay, so we will um bring uh. Move forward on the agenda and this will uh be before us at our next supervisor meeting. Up next on our agenda, we have under new business, the Recreation Authority Verizon Cell Tower Project, project update.
So I wanted to bring this to the board's attention. There's no action needed at this point in time. But the Recreation Board is working on a. Cell tower project. As soon as I find my little map here. On the golf course. So this is the fourteenth hole.
Okay.
This is Nisley Road. This is where the property was uh for the caretaker, and this is where the gardens are now. What is proposed or has been proposed, we are planning on putting a retention basin in this area. And also in this area. And the Recreation Authority has been approached by Verizon to install a cell tower. They had proposed it more in the middle of the basin, that wasn't going to work. They have now proposed it for this area. Uh, which is not used by the golf course. Again, this is, I guess you call it the fairway. Uh, for fourteen, uh, so it's, it's out of play, it's, it's out of the area. There will be an access road off the gardens and then leading down to this location. So I simply wanted to make you aware that this proposal was out there. The Rec Board is working, Rec Authority is working on agreements with Verizon. What will come back to the Board of Supervisors is an easement agreement to allow for this access road to be used by Verizon to access this property. Off of your property, and you'll also have to sign off on the use of the cell tower on the golf course property.
So the, the stormwater. And forgive me, maybe we've discussed this before, but I, I can't recall it. How far along is that as far as design and?
They are in the process of doing the design, every, all the survey work has been done. We do have a grant for it. It's uh just over three hundred thousand dollars for do, to do the one basin here on the larger of the two.
Okay.
Originally, it was like right, right in the middle of that.
Yeah.
Basin. That's, so that's, that's why it had to be moved to the, to the edge.
I hadn't made the connection that there's a basin and there's a cell tower, so. That connection's been made now and we have to accommodate. Fortunately, Verizon was able to see and find an alternate site. This would generate revenue for the Recreation Authority. Which is one of the tasks that the Board of Supervisors have assigned to the Rec Authority.
No, that's, that's great. And that's, well, I think that's all good. I'm actually excited about the stormwater. I know we've had some, quite a few. Issues in that area and I'm.
It will slow, slow it down, yes. Before it gets to church.
Okay. Any other questions, comments about that? And are, any questions or comments from the audience in reference to this? Okay, any from Zoom?
No.
Hearing none, um, do we have any public comment in reference to items that weren't on the agenda this evening? Any from Zoom?
No.
Managers report.
So Centerville Road, uh, residents are definitely being impacted. We had some residents very concerned about the congestion happening at Marietta and Stony Battery. Is strongly suggested that you avoid that intersection. The um. Flagler Forest and Penn Dot are working, doing their best to minimize the congestion, but it's a very difficult intersection to. Uh, control. I also noted on my report that seven oh six, seven ten and seven sixteen Centerville Road, which is a property that the township purchased for this proper, for this project. We've asked for tax exempt status on those projects since it's going to be used for a uh retention basin. And that was actually granted by the assessment office. We don't need to file any further paperwork, so that was good. The church street paving, again, that uh, the culvert's in place. They intend to open that roadway on the seventh. That will then stay open until sometime in the spring of next year for the paving. Old Warriors Town Road, still struggling with issues with utilities and, and railroad um points. Um, we're trying to work through those, uh, Ekman, the Penn Dot representative, so we're, we're still plugging away at that. Farmingdale Road, they're, they're still doing their work at Marietta and Good primarily. Uh, hopefully the um, mast arc will be delivered in August. And they can finish that project. The truck study, we did have the meeting with West Tenfield Township. We are finalizing and modifying the report. And that should be available at the Traffic Commission meeting in September and then to the Board of Supervisors at that same meeting. The Stony Battery Road Trail, um, we're still waiting for Verizon to handle their work at the corner of Nolt and Stony Battery. That's the second time that they missed their deadline. I'll go back to the developer and see if he has a new one. But they're still experiencing the same thing really that, that Old Warriors Town Road is. T connectivity, uh. They ha- are reviewing an agreement uh at corporate, so that's going to take some time until they uh give us me, give me the heads up to go ahead, move forward, get that signed. Route seventy-two and Lititz Road, the grant has been submitted to the Commonwealth Financing Authority, so we have our fingers crossed. We hope to hear that announcement in November of twenty twenty-three, which is that temporary signal that we're going to put out there. Good news for residents as well as the township, the trash contract, we are in our, going into our fourth year. It was an extension of one year. We have another one, uh, would need to be agreed upon by the township and the hauler. Township certainly wants that, the hauler has agreed to it, so our fees will probably likely not go up. We don't have to bid that project. We talked about the cell tower. I do have some stormwater projects. The only one I really want to give you an update on is Dorsey Drive. We have a stormwater pipe there that uh needs to be repaired. And we've actually scheduled a meeting with the residents and the engineer for that, the seventeenth of August, so that's moving forward. To discuss the scope of, of work on that. concludes the report unless there's questions.
Any question? Uh, I want to say well done to G V I, our road work there at Marietta and Nolt. They've done a lot of work there with their hands tied behind their, their back. And given the supply chain issues that they've had, and I think they've made some great progress on that, that uh, that road intersection. So just wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
Mrs. White, sir, I want to thank you for uh getting those um weeds and everything wa- uh knocked down there at. Um, Stony Battery and Nolt Road. And if we can continue to monitor that to get that end of the trail complete, that would be great. There's nothing else for the good of the order. We will adjourn our meeting at seven forty-seven P M. Thank you. We'll, we'll see you on August sixteenth.
What does that say with our uniforms? It's leave. There we go.